One, I would like to call the county council workshop meeting between Buford County Council and Hilton Head Island Council for the Highway 278 project to order. Would you all rise for the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public notice of this meeting has been published, posted, and distributed in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. Before I ask for a member of council to move our agenda and second our agenda, let me give you some housekeeping things that we need to do. You will see in front of you is a microphone. If you wish to speak, you will have to press the button to change it to green. Okay? We do have a lot of people in the room. This is being taped. There will be people who will be looking in. We see each other's names, but people on the county channel may not. So when you are speaking, if you would please identify who you are. Okay? So with that in mind, may I have an approval of the agenda, please? From a member of county council. Mr. Radman makes the motion. May I?
Alice.
Alice Howard makes the second. Any discussion about the agenda? Seeing none, the agenda will be approved without any objections, and I see no objections. This evening, under item number five, the SCDOT, the Buford County Council, and the Town of Hilton Head Council are going to conduct a workshop for the Highway 278 project. I'm going to do some introductory remarks. I am then going to turn it over to Jared, who will do some other remarks. I will then turn it over to Craig Nguyen, who will have a presentation for us. I will then turn it over to my counterpart, Mayor McCann, for any remarks he wishes to make. And then we can have a dialogue on all the information we have received. It's a wonderful opportunity for us to get together again. You know, just recently, we were at the Hilton Head Council, where we took the 26 recommendations and thoroughly discussed them. Senator Davis then came aboard and said that he wanted to do some things. Based upon some of the things he did for us by going to the state and meeting with Secretary Hall and SCDOT allows us to have this meeting so that we can take those things that we talked about and narrow them down so we're that much closer to moving this project along to the full design that has to be done before anything else can happen. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jared.
Sure, absolutely. Jared Freyletz with Buford County. So again, thank you for everybody for participating and joining us tonight. Just a great opportunity for us to work together and continue to move this project, which is a generational project, to forward into fruition. So one thing I just want to reiterate is kind of where we are. One of the main things that we're all aware of is the funding that we have set up for the project. So the biggest one, no funding comes without its own restrictions. And the biggest one that we have is the CIB application and the CIB grant. So there's $120 million there. The worst thing about the funding is that it's only $120 million. So as this project develops, as we all are aware of in today's environment with inflation and increased costs, it's only $120 million. So that's something for us to be aware of. It's something that we have as the county in signing the application or the IGA that any cost incurred beyond that, don't go back to CIB, don't go back to DOT to come back to the county. So that's something that we're constantly aware of and are working through. The other parts with the CIB application and the funding that comes along with that is some restrictions. Basically, what we submitted together, the town and the county with our CIB application, is basically codified in the IGA and is basically the gospel from how it's approached. So everything that we submitted between our timeliness of the project, when we get started, the funding sources, all that is codified and is our rules of engagement. One thing that we did also make mention at the time was that this project was pretty close to shovel ready. So one of the commitments that we have as the county is to provide quarterly updates to the CIB. So we just provided our first quarterly update since the application or the IGA was finalized last fall with that quarterly report. And it was, it was a difficult report to write as far as a quarterly report based off when the application was and approval from, from the CIB in 2020. And we started work on this all the way back in 2017 when we first engaged DOT under contract. So it's been a long time in the making. All the work that we've worked on isn't in vain, but it's building us up to a point. But what, if that did anything, was to remind me and us as a county and us as a group at large is that we can't just march aimlessly. We got to have a direction and we got to continue to keep pressing forward. And that schedule that's along with that is that this project is to be fully completed by the end of 2028. So the longer that we take on the front end is less time on the construction or vice versa. If we get more time finished early on the front end on the design, more time for construction. So as, as we take time, it's not that we're moving aimlessly, but we do have a pointed direction and that CIB application and that $120 million worth of funding is something that is a constant reminder to all of us. So that's one of the ways that we're approaching and one of the requirements that we have as the county. So based off last meeting and a lot of the comments that we've had, we've had now three or two public hearings and then a third public information meeting held in March. There's a lot of good comments. We've made a lot of modifications over the process in coordinating with, with all the stakeholders, not just us, but also the locals and, and the, the agencies that are going to be reviewing the project. All those were incorporated. And a lot of additions and modifications have been made along the way. So the comments that have been made in the public are not made in vain. They have been incorporated into what we have now as the modified preferred alternative. So thought it was fitting for us, I don't know that we've done a good job as, as spearheading the project of communicating all the efforts that have been put into the project thus far, both to our council and to Hilton Head's council, town council. So thought it was fitting for us to invite DOT and KCI, the design team, to come and talk and tell us what has been incorporated and some of the more recent items that have been discussed. And from there, we can talk from where we go from what other items do we have to resolve to kind of again, press this project forward and, and bring it into existence. So with that, Craig, I'll let you guys start with what you have.
Thank you, Jared. So what? I'll pull it closer. Is that better? Okay.
And that's Craig Nguyen from the SCDOT was the project manager?
Yes, please. Yeah, so we've got a short, maybe 10 slide PowerPoint that just goes through some of the, some of the issues where we've been in NEPA, but it also addresses some of the concerns that Senator Davis shared in his letter as well. So we're going to talk through, through the NEPA process, we're going to talk through traffic. We're going to talk end-to-end simulation. That's been a big thing that it hasn't been done. It's been done. We'll show the numbers and everything for it. It was all shown at the public hearing, but it'll be shown again as part of this.
And these slides will be made available to each and every one of you?
Yeah. So first, we'll start with the NEPA process overview. So when we look at the NEPA process.
Craig, can I interrupt you a second?
Yeah.
As you go through these terms, not everybody is familiar with the term, both here and in public.
Yes.
If you could explain each of the terms to be beneficial to you.
Yes, sir. So the NEPA process is the overarching environmental process in developing a project, whether that's through federal highways, that's through EPA, that's through any federal agency. They have to follow the NEPA process, which is an environmental, National Environmental Policy Act. So it's an overarching policy that gathers all the other environmental policies, federal environmental policies, state policies underneath of it and what's looked at for it. So as you look through it, you know, the first thing that we did in 2018, we had a public information meeting, which was entirely to gather the public's understanding what, what they would like to see as part of the project. We held that in September of 2018. So it was actually held two months before the referendum to try to gather ideas to get, to get the project. It was kind of the kickoff of the project. The next thing we go out and we do is perform technical studies. So we have environmental scientists, specialists that go out, they, they look at all the wetlands. They create initially, they started with GIS-based maps to understand the wetlands, the cultural resources, any essential fish habitat, and they start coordination with all the federal and state partners. We, at the DOT, we have agency coordination meetings that happen monthly. So this project has been before the agency coordination meeting, which includes Coast Guard, Corps of Engineers Fish and Wildlife, federal highways, DNR, et cetera, all the federal agencies that make a decision on the project. SHPO is typically included in that as well. So we do all these technical studies. That kind of gives us the base map to go on. So then we developed 19 alternatives and I'll go through those again. So we developed the, the range of 19 alternatives. Those were based on some of the feedback that we got from the public as well as from council members to understand, you know, hey, what other ways are we looking at? What can we find, you know, that potentially to solve this solution? So we had anything that went from the Bluffton Parkway that connects to the Cross Island Parkway to the ones that went north and connected into the other end of the, you know, other end of the Cross Island Parkway. So we had multiple options and I'll show those. So in that, then we analyzed those alternatives. There's initial criteria, and I believe that's the next slide that shows the initial criteria, which is all GIS-based. It was wetlands, properties right away, consistently with Pinney Island Wildlife Refuge. Because that was a big thing that we had to look at is we have wildlife refuge in the middle of this project. So we had to work with Fish and Wildlife Service to find something that met their purpose of what their refuge was for. So we've had multiple coordination meetings directly with them as well as the ACE meetings. So we analyzed those alternatives. That gives us, that kind of helps us evaluate those. And then we went from 19 to nine under that. So that's, that kind of, you know, based on those alternatives, you carry it down. Then we took that to a second public information meeting in 20, late 2019. And then that's where we showed the impacts of those. From there, we go back and we developed the preferred alternative based on the impacts that were shown at that meeting. And based, after that's done, we developed the environmental assessment. So the environmental assessment, before we go to the public hearing, federal highway signs environmental assessments. We start gathering all the other coordination signatures. We've got multiple participating agencies that the federal partners participate in the NEPA document, which basically means that they can take that document as their own and then they make a decision based on that document. So after that, we went to the public hearing, which was late last year. I think it was September of last year, or July, July of last year. And based on that, we got comments and we revised it based on some of the, the feedback we got from the town, MKSK. You know, that, that was revised to when we had the, the third public information meeting, which was held in March. So based on that, we held another public information meeting to display to the public where we were finding that went from there. So now it's been revised. We're looking at the comments and revising again if there's anything that needs to be revised for, from an impact standpoint. So NEPA really gives you the box to work within. You get a general idea. You're trying to find a box working that's, gives you the impacts, the highest level impacts, and then you refine from there to your final design. So if you'll look at, and we'll show the, the preferred alternative started off with, I believe, 40 acres of wetland impacts. It ends up as the recommend preferred at 22 and a half. So all that was reduced down. So then ultimately, the final federal highway decision is the, is a finding no significant impact or you need to develop an environmental assessment. That's, that's the decision that they're making. We're working through the Fonzie document now, but we have to have some buy-in locally from, to make sure before they sign it. They want to make, make sure they're all working, everybody locally is working together before that document is signed. So. All right. So a federal highway decision does not mean it can't be adjusted. So there's refinement. So everything at this point is 20 to 30% design plan. So it's just enough basically to get a footprint and then you refine it from there. You can tighten slopes and you can adjust it. We can move the multi-use path. We can move things around, but we want to stay within our right-of-way footprint that we've shown as part of that alternative. So this was the original night, range of 19 alternatives. So this was what we call the spaghetti map. So this is where we go and we look at everything. So yeah, one forward too far. So you can see the one, you know, one of the alternatives that was mentioned in the proposal from Senator Davis was one that ties from the Bluffton Parkway to near where the toll ramps are. So you can see it's like the light brown color shows that alternative, roughly shows that alternative. It comes down, it crosses over the intercoastal waterway. So we've got to be perpendicular and then it comes back in and ties in. So we did some evaluation this, this week, just high level look at this. And that's, so here, here's where the reasonable alternative. So we went from 19 to nine. So you can see everything in gray was eliminated based on impacts. And there is a matrix on the website that shows what each of those levels are. It's going to be the next slide. Nobody's going to be able to read it because it's just to show that, you know, what the matrix looked like. So this is the matrix. So you can see the ones in green were the ones that were carried forward. But then we'll go to, so that 4D is roughly the preferred alternative. That's the alignment that it went on. Then 60 is the one that connects directly to the Cross Island Parkway. So you can see wetlands, there's 40 acres of wetlands shown there for 4D. 60 is 122 acres of wetland impacts. The right-of-way parcels are 88 and 110. But under that, the preferred alternative has two relocations. 60 has 30-plus relocations, which it also goes through the Spanish Walls community. It would split the community again. So it was already split once by the Cross Island Parkway. Making this connection in there would split the community again. And majority of those relocations are within the Spanish Walls community. Yolaguita community, yes. So this is the flow chart as we went through and evaluated the alternatives. So the initial evaluation criteria going from 19 to nine was didn't meet the purpose and the other project. The purpose and the project was to replace the Mackey Creek Bridge and reduce congestion through the corridor was the gist of the purpose and need. And then, you know, so personally, we're just looking at structural efficiency at this point. Then we look at GIS-based wetlands, protected acre, protected land, right-of-way impacts, compatibility with the Pinney Island at US Fish and Wildlife Service, and then neighborhood impacts. So from that, there was a clear definition of, of those 19 down to the nine of the impacts where you can see the break in them. So then the next evaluation criteria after the, the public meeting was, so you have the purpose and need, traffic performance, which is level of service and intersection operations. Then you go down to, you know, delineated wetlands. We actually went in the field and delineated all the wetlands. We're out there GPS surveyed in any wetlands and so we could have a greater accuracy in our calculations. Threat and endangered species and environmental justice communities are typically minority, low-income communities. Let's see, historic and cultural properties, noise impacts. So we do a noise study through as part of that. So we look at alternatives, look at the noise study. Then we do a detailed noise study for the preferred alternative. We look at hazardous materials, utility impacts. This is where project cost comes in. So this is the first time that you really look at traffic performance, first time you look at cost for the project. So this is a reminder in environmental process. So you could have an alternative that performs great from a traffic perspective, but it impacts 120 acres of wetlands. So it doesn't get carried forward because we're looking for the least impact, least impactful practical alternative. So we're looking for one that meets the purpose and need the best, but also has least, least impact on the environment and the human and natural environment. So then again, we got the US Fish Wildlife compatibility, shellfish harvesting waters and essential fish habitats. We're looking, you know, we, we have to look at different fish species. If there's endangered fish, there's essential fish habitat throughout there that need protected and what those impacts would be. And from there, it went to the public hearing and then that's where the recommend preferred alternative was. Then we carried it forward and modified it and took it back to the public again. So again, here is the recommended, the modified recommended preferred alternative, which includes the, the meander through Stony, includes this, through Jenkins, sorry, through Jenkins, the intersections, the change in the intersection of Squar Pope Road and Spanish Walls Road, as well as the reduced impacts within Stony. So now we have a, a quick discuss, discussion on traffic studies analysis, which end-to-end computer, computer modeling. So hopefully everybody can read this. So what, what we're showing here, the, so when we, we look at it two different ways. We look at it through synchro initially and then sim traffic. So you're looking at synchro looks at it in segments, mile-long segments when there's not intersection, then intersection. Sim traffic looks the entire corridor. It does multiple runs through the corridor. Because each time you run the simulation, you're going to get a little bit different results. So in this, in the AM, so this is all 2045 traffic. In the AM, in the eastbound direction, it would take approximately 60 minutes to get on the island. And that's from Moss Creek to Spanish Walls Road at a speed of 10 miles an hour. Under the modified reasonable preferred alternative, it's 14.1 minutes at 24 miles an hour for a time savings of 45 minutes. And then in the, in the PM getting off, you're still looking at, in the eastbound direction. So getting back on the island in the PM, you're still looking at 30 minutes at 13 miles an hour. And then under the modified alternative, you're 10 and a half minutes at 37 miles an hour. So again, in the westbound direction, so getting off the island in the AM, it's no build scenario, so that's no improvements with 2045 growth traffic. It's 24.3 minutes in the, in the morning at 15 miles an hour. And the, in the afternoon, or sorry, in the morning with modified reasonable preferred alternative, you're at 8.8 minutes, minutes at 41 miles an hour with, with a savings of 15 and a half minutes. So in the PM no build are, is basically 52 minutes to get off the island. So again, that's getting through that corridor to get off the island. It's 52 minutes. Under the modified reasonable preferred alternative, you're at 19.7 minutes, which is a time savings of 31.9 minutes. So again, you've doubled your speed. It's still not, still not great, but you're still, you know, much improved over what's there. And that's, you know, that's again, growing that peak hour time. So this is all based on peak hour traffic. So this is looking at, the PM is four to six PM, the morning is seven to nine AM. So that's, that's the traffic that we're looking at. So when we determine what those hours are, we look at, we rank all the hours throughout the year. And you try to find something between the 70th to 100th highest hour of the year that's not a special event or a weekend. And that, and then you typically take that as your, what your peak is growing off of. So you get your growth rate and then you grow your peak based on that. Again, what we're looking for, I think we end up at the 131st highest hour once we took out the, the weekends, holidays, special events. We're not looking for the heritage. We're not looking for, you know, a weekend commute. Because we don't want to over-design. If you look at those events, you're going to over-design the corridor. We're trying to find something that's going to meet the needs for a majority of the time through. We're trying to find something that's going to meet the needs for a majority of the time through, knowing that you're going to exceed it. It's like you're, you're going to exceed your capacity at some point throughout the project. So again, that, the lower right on the screen there, that green is basically an output from the sim traffic model. And we showed all this as part of the public hearing. We had the sim traffic models that we ran for everybody. And then, yeah, I think about two years ago, we took the east of the councils where we ran a model where we put a camera on top of a car in the sim model running through the corridor. And they went from the Spanish Walls intersection all the way through the corridor without having to stop in the PM condition. So the next discussion I am is a single bridge versus two bridge. So this is what, a, a quick sketch of what we looked at that, that would meet the, the curvature and the needs of it. So this gets you your separation from the bridge there. But when we look at this, we have three points that we have to meet at that brings us back together to a single bridge. That's the point we take off in Bluffton, especially across Pinney Island. We have a, there's agreements with Fish and Wildlife Service for where that's, where that's going. That is a significantly long process to get to that agreement with them. Um, and then again, we're tying back in on Jenkins Road. So you can see you get some separation that curvature meets the design speed of it. But issues you run into, and this is not the 31 million, $31 million difference. This is probably closer to $50 million in additional costs because you're extending the bridge by putting all these curves in it. Probably two to 300 feet. So you're looking, you know, 10, 20 million dollars of additional costs in there, as well as additional design costs to do this. Cause instead of being able to replicate parts of the bridge that you've, you're, as you're designing it, each, each individual pier is designed. So instead of saying we have 10 peers that are identical, we can design them each. Now you end up with each individual peer that goes across there as a, as a single design. But also you run into the difficulty of now you're skewing the bridge peers in relation to the water travel. And when you try to get across there with a boat, you have difficulty lining your peers up. So again, that's just some of the things we've identified when we looked at this. Again, this is a quick look at it. We've done this over the last few days to come up with roughly what it would look like. One thing to look at through this, you create additional wetland impacts, essential fish habitat, residential relocations, recreational and right-of-way impacts. So when, again, when we go back and we look at, we're looking for the least environmentally impact alternative. When we start splitting the bridge, you're increasing your environmental impacts. So when we go to get the permit, go to get the Fonzie for the project, they're going to look at us and say, you have an alternative that's a, that's a less impactful alternative. Why are you not doing that alternative? And then we will go to turn it back over to the chairman.
Okay. John, do you want to make some comments?
Thank you very much, Jim, for putting this together. Craig, I must tell you that you've done a great job. Is it on?
Yes.
You've done a great job doing the public services and the public meetings. I mean, you've gone on your way to meet people and talk to people and we in the town of Hilton Head appreciate it. Well, well received. Thank you very much. This is interesting. We, um, us and our consultants sent forward 26 items to the county to look at as to what we would like to see changed or done on the bridge corridor. We believe that if you disregard the cost of anything, that those items, as we send them forward, should be approved by the county and sent on to the state. So if it doesn't cost the county any money to approve it, why not just approve it, send it to the state? Let the state turn this down and then put the responsibility back on the town of Hilton Head to look for the money that's needed to do what we want to do. There shouldn't be any differences between us and the county. We're all serving the same public. And we're all here to do the right thing. But it's in our best interest to come together and do something together, then send it to the county, to the town, to the state and say, this is what we really like along the way. The two bridge concept there is interesting. There's just too much going on at one time for me to grasp it all in one piece. It looked like a spaghetti from the beginning, but I understand what you're saying. But I also understand that one of the concepts on the, the important part of the two bridges is we have an emergency exit. If anything is down with one bridge, we have the other bridge. And that's most important to me more than the, what it looks like. But we need that second bridge somewhere along the way. And when we first started doing this, people from Stony said, why don't you build a separate bridge someplace else for backup? Well, this was a good alternative, putting a second bridge right next to that. So the important part for me is the safety of our people and getting them off the, off the island. If one of the bridges go down for whatever reason it is. We're very appreciative of being here, Joe, today. It's a good discussion and I hope to walk away with some results between the county and the town. Thank you, Joe.
Okay. Uh, I'm sure, um, individuals will have questions. So, um, I'd like to give everyone an opportunity to address what you have seen here tonight and see how we can move forward. So who would like to begin? Mr. Brown, go ahead.
Evening, everyone. I too thank, uh, you, Mr. Chairman, for bringing us together. It's good to see everybody. I've said this before, I'd love to see you all more often. Uh, so let's, uh, let's, let's continue this, this spirit. I agree with the mayor with, um, us at least taking a breath for a moment and thinking through this as if money wasn't an option. And, um, this is not a question that I need answered, but I'm not quite sure how we came up with the original estimate as far as what we were submitting to CIB Bank, not understanding the entire impact of this project. Okay? And again, I'm not looking for an answer for that, but I do have some questions for Craig if he could answer for me. I know it's been this, this, uh, this fear of funding disappearing. If for some reason, um, the, the Fonzie is not achieved, okay? And it does make its way to a full-blown EIS, what happens to the funding? And what happens to the escalation as far as inflation and the other accounts, uh, at that point?
A, a project of this scale, we, we, you know, roughly, you're looking at roughly a million dollars a week right now. An escalation of cost. A week. So you're looking somewhere between two to $4 million a month in cost escalation on delay.
So that, that wasn't my question. My question was, I appreciate you bringing that to our attention, but my question is, this is, this is not the first project that SC DOT has brought forward to the federal highway administration. And I'm sure there has been projects that have not achieved this finding of no significant impact. Okay? And have to go to an EIS or have to be adjusted or whatever the process is. What happens to the monies that have already been assigned to the project at that point?
That would be a county question versus a DOT question. So the county is the one with the applicant or with the IGA with the CIB. So that would be us updating them on the status of the project. And then it'd be us coordinating with CIB on that funding solution. So if they're willing to continue to work with us, it, at that point, if it goes to an EIS, it's another 12 to 18 months worth of process. So then we have to coordinate with them and basically it's whether we can work something out with the CIB to modify our agreement because we'd be extending beyond the 2028 completion date at that time schedule. And if we can, great. If we can't, then I'm sure there may be other counties or municipalities that will be eager to take that funding. It should CIB, um, draw that money back.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Felix. So have you, uh, Craig, in your experience, have you seen where, aside monies have gone back because there's more work to do because we found some significant impacts that we need to work through?
It, it's kind of dependent because the, the CIB board has changed their direction over the last couple of years. I would say in the history of it, they've left stuff, you know, if you look at like Mark Clark and Charleston, it's sat around for 20 years. But because of Mark Clark and Charleston, I don't think that's ever going to happen again. There's going to be, you know, 40 other counties going for this money. You know, they're going to be talking to the CIB board saying, hey, we can spend it right now. We've got this project ready to go.
Okay. Um, and I'll, I'll just, I'll just end with, um, I'm glad you brought those, uh, those charts and be eager to get our hands on them so we can look at them, uh, a little deeper. The travel time, at least from my recollection, last time that we met as a council and you all presented us with numbers has, uh, has increased tremendously. I thought it was like a seven-minute savings. Now we're up to 45 minutes. Okay? That's impressive. Um, but, um, what I, what I would, what I would say is that the impacts on Hilton Head are bigger than just the two, two relocations that are being described. Okay? Mr. Felix mentioned earlier that this is a generational project and it absolutely is. And, uh, we need to be certain that we get it right. Okay? And, you know, I've been comparing this project to, uh, what's happening in, uh, in Charleston with the 526, uh, extension. And SC DOT state has gone above and beyond to achieve reasonable mitigation for the project. And to date, the community on Hilton Head is not yet satisfied with what's been proposed as mitigation. And, um, I'll pause if SC DOT wants to make some sort of comment towards that. But the bottom line is we can do better.
I mean, the only thing I would say is those are two separate projects. So the environmental process on 526 found EJ impacts as part of that project. This project does not have the same level of impacts that that project has. And it doesn't have, they're, they're just different in the way that they're developed. They're different in the impacts and the way the federal highway has looked at those impacts.
And when you define impacts?
The impacts are right-of-way relocations, et cetera. So those are, those are directly to the EJ.
So it's a number of relocations that we're using as a metric.
And cumulative relocations.
Okay. And, and again, for us as a group, I'd ask us to think more about impacts outside of just relocations. Okay? I think it's important for us to understand that the reason that we are having this conversation and that we have monies on the table is because of how significant Hilton Head is. And to me, that's leverage. If we want to do better, following the normal guidelines that SC DOT puts in place to deliver a finding of no significant impact, it's just not good enough for Hilton Head. I'll stop there, Mr. Chair. Thank you for that time.
One thing, point of clarification is the travel time previously was just through the intersections that showed the time savings. It wasn't the entire corridor.
Okay. Thank you.
Someone else who would like to make comments? I'm sure there's lots to make a comment there. Just, I would like to, uh, add something that I think Craig can elaborate on. Did not the original, uh, study, uh, show no impacts of this project through Stony?
As far as the federal agencies, like the, the mitigation is an agreement between the county and the DOT. It is not a federal highway requirement for the project. Yes.
What's that?
I hope so.
Again, the relocations are not how we measure the impact. I mean, let's, let's face it here, ladies and gentlemen. We've got a federal Department of Transportation that is saying, we're not going to destroy minority neighborhoods by building highways anymore. And here you have a historical Gullah neighborhood. Mr., uh, I think Mr. Felix mentioned that when we built the Cross Island, we disturbed Spanish Wells and here we'll be disturbing it twice. Well, this will be the third time for Stony. There was no bridge. Bridge came, they were disturbed. Came back for four lanes, they were disturbed then. And now they disturb a third time. It is not just about the individuals that live next to the road. It is about the experience of coming onto Hilton Head, a place that is rich in a history, in a culture. So I will continue to challenge this idea of if you only move two structures and replace that with a pavilion or a sign that says folks were once here. At least national level, that's not enough.
I might add something on that, so Jared Felix. Um, so one thing, I think, um, Senator Davis made mention of this and he's championed this ever at the Stony, at the state level is to try to redirect some appropriations, $5 million towards the Stony EDC. I think that's something in addition to, there's no, um, maximum of mitigation that you can do, um, only minimum. Would, and whether there's a minimum or not, there's some preclusion already that we're making in the project. In meeting with Stony community members that they've presented as, as a couple of different, the pavilion and a couple of different things. There's nothing to say that we have to stop there to what you're saying. And I think what, what Senator Davis had mentioned in setting that up, I think that's a worthwhile endeavor as well that we should work on. And I would, I would say also that, um, whether, whether the town of Hilton Head takes lead in that or whether we do, or whether we do that jointly in some manner. I think with Senator Davis's self, I think that's another way that we can present mitigation as part of this project with that Stony Development EDC.
I agree with you, Mr. Felix. And it goes back to what the mayor said in the beginning. The town as a municipality has presented 26 recommendations to our colleagues. And we're asking for you to say, okay, we agree with your 26 and give them to the state and get a response. So I like your response, but we're looking for a response from SC DOT.
Well, the response isn't for SC DOT. The response, DOT is not the owner of the project and not going to provide that response. And they've made that abundantly clear to us, the county. The county is, is the owner of the project and the responses are choreographed response. So what we provided, um, previously in the responses was not just DOT, it was, it was with the county as well. And a lot of those responses, and I think we've talked about them and Sean enumerated them and we listed and walked through them last time we met. There's been a lot of accommodations to those. There's a couple of them. And as Craig mentioned today, with the two bridge scenario, that has a lot of different impacts that are going to significantly impact everything now at this point is measured to the preferred, modified preferred alternative that has been set forth. So if there's impacts to, um, a change beyond what's been presented thus far, then that would look, um, unfavorably from the agencies that have to approve the project. So the bar has been set with the preferred alternative and now the modified preferred alternative. Uh, and that was something that was looked at even with the left-hand turn at Stony, at Squire Pope. Is originally that was not part of the preferred alternative. And then per the comments from, um, the town and MKSK, as well as many that we heard at the public hearing, that was reconsidered and coordinated and choreographed with federal highway. And that wasn't a simple task in itself. That was something that we had to, uh, plan on. And how do we mitigate? The traffic is a little bit less than how it performed in the preferred alternative, but not so significant that the impacts, um, weren't something that we could overcome with their blessing. So, um, those, there's been several changes and modifications that were incorporated, due to those 26 comments, but DOT is not the entity to come back and provide a answer on those 26 comments that would come from the county.
Okay. I appreciate us pushing through the left turns. I think that gives the community, uh, some confidence that precedent has been set, that we can push through the others that we still have concerns with. Thank you.
So you're saying that this should have been a town project from the very beginning as opposed to a county project? That the town should have started this project and ran with this project? And that we don't know better what we need, the county knows better what we need than we, what we need. That's a mistake. I mean, this is coming through Hilton Head. It's our entrance way. It's our home. And no one should be telling us what we want is wrong. And no one should be telling us what we want is wrong. They should try to help us facilitate what we get is right, because what we get is right is good for everybody, not just the town of Hilton Head.
I kind of disagree with that, John. And let me explain why. We literally have two projects. The bridges are a county project. They're on county land. After that, it goes through the Stony community, which is a town project. Where we are now is accepting the fact that we, together, want the bridges replaced. Where we have a disagreement right now is two bridges versus one bridge. And if you could put the slide back up again, we...
I had a point on the safety aspect of that. So those bridges with the shoulders that are on the bridge, if you have an impact to that bridge that would take you down, have an ax on one direction. The other side can be reversed, and you have enough to get two lanes in each direction, on and off the island. And those bridges will be designed for any sort of impacts. We're looking at barge-level impacts, vessel collision impacts on those piers, earthquakes. Those existing bridges right now aren't designed to withstand any sort of earthquake. If there is pretty much any level of earthquake right now, those bridges would just sink into the ground.
Joe, I agree with you, but that means that our only difference is the bridge? That everything else should be run by Hilton Head? You should talk to the county, it's what we want. And I understand a bridge is like, it's in the county, not ours.
Yeah. And so, as they said, the pinch points, the fish and wildlife controls exactly how the bridge is going to go over that island. And because of that, that's why you see the bridges are back together again. When you have separation of the bridges, you're going to add, what'd you say, three-hundred yards? But you're going to affect one community there. And is it worth it to elongate the project? You're out of the approved corridor that they have set up. And therefore, we will have delayed the project as much as eighteen months. And then, we are very concerned, whether we all agree with that or not, that at some point in time, somebody may say, the CIB may say, "I got forty other counties that want this money, and you're not ready to do the project. You said it was shovel-ready, and it's not. And therefore, we're going to move on to something else at this point in time."
But the real difference between county and town is the bridge. There's nothing else.
I would hope it's, you know, one bridge versus two.
And that's our only difference right now.
Yeah. Because, you know, we're at the process where we accept the project. Now, we get to design it the way we think it's best for the experience. To Alex's point, we don't want people just traveling through that corridor, not knowing what the experience is in the Stony community. We have an opportunity to do something dynamic at this point in time. It's part and parcel of the design as we go through that corridor. The bridge is the bridge. You know, it has to go a certain way because of the environmental impacts and fish and wildlife, and the fact that we have to design it in such a way that the boat traffic can get under there. All of that is, to me, rudimentary. Once we have an agreement, yeah, we want to do the project. As he said, the bridge is going to be designed such that if something happened on one section of the bridge, you have the other section of the bridge if you had to reverse lanes and get everybody on. You know, if you had a major accident that tied up one part of the bridge, you could route the traffic and make it go both ways. So I think we could come to that agreement, that we don't want to hold up the project because we think a couple hundred yards of concrete is the way to go. The rest of it, to me, is how do we design the rest of the way into Hilton Head and make it as an experience as we possibly can have? And we, the county, want to work with you on that. Whatever agency, whatever funding, additional funding we can get, let's have at it. But I'm hoping that we can walk away from this meeting where you can go back to your council and say, "Let's approve this and start the process for the true design of what we're going to get." Because we're ready to do that. You know, we accepted everything except for the bridge. We don't feel that it's necessary to expend that kind of money. We don't think it's going to be as beneficial as everybody thinks it's going to be as far as aesthetics. That's just my opinion, and I hope everybody else will weigh in that way.
David. I'll be terse. I would disagree with the county chairman on that. Scale is absolutely critical to the entry experience into Hilton Head. And by having a single bridge, it's an introduction to Hilton Head that rivals major cities. And so I fundamentally disagree that that's the way we want to introduce the island. And to the extent that we disagree, then I don't believe that it is a hundred percent a Beaufort County decision, because the citizens of Hilton Head are citizens of the county and have... I was going to say an axe to grind, but an oar to put in the water. I think we have to acknowledge that a good deal of thought has gone into this by the town, by our consultants, and by citizens. Our conclusion has been that there are twenty-six recommendations that we would like to present to the state and seek our legislative delegation on our behalf to push those recommendations forward. And that's really where I am as a single member of council.
Joe and Jared, I think there, of the twenty-six recommendations coming out of the MKSK work, there were four or five that needed more fully developed. And one of them was two bridges versus one. And based on Craig's comments and Jared's comments, and the visual of seeing the alternative to bridges, I think the visual is very disturbing. And we've said for a long time, the postcard is not supposed to be the bridge. The postcard is the island. And I want to make certain that continues. So I think for that reason, I do support the recommendation of one bridge. The other issues that I think we talked about, and most of the talk surrounded cost, was the meandering on Jenkins Island of the roadway, the bubbleouts on the bridge pathway, and the smart signals throughout the entire corridor. The question I would have Craig, Jared, and Joe would be, other than cost, are there other issues or objections that could be raised on those items that we're discussing ex the bridge?
On the items you just mentioned, beyond the bridge? No, those are all attainable.
So if we jointly could find a way to finance those into the project, the likelihood of those being done is good.
Oh, yes. Yeah. We absolutely believe we can have the other partners that we need in there, the landscape designers, other design team members that can fall under the KCI contract in the overall design of the bridge, that this becomes part and parcel of the whole bridge project.
And Craig, as I look back to the most recent projects DOT has done on or around the island, the most recent is the cross island, or excuse me, the most recent is the flyover. And then twenty years ago, the cross island. In my opinion, DOT is two-for-two. And I have no reason to believe that the combination of DOT, KCI, MKSK doesn't have the best interest of the county generally, and specifically the island and its residents, their best interests in mind. So I think you're going to be three-for-three.
As Chairman Passamit just mentioned, and I don't know if everybody caught that, but as the project transitions to where we are, kind of in the preliminary stage to a full design, some of the comments that were in the MKSK is the rival experience, the aesthetics, all those, the landscaping. Those are items that we haven't got to yet. However, and they're not even consultants, subconsultants under KCI, but we have an opportunity as we negotiate a contract with DOT and KCI to go to full design. We're only under contract right now for the preliminary design in NEPA. But as we go into that, request that they add those subconsultants or services to their contract, so we could have a landscape plan and design for that. We may not have the funding for it at this moment, and we can figure that out, but we can design it, as well as a potential aesthetic architect or planner, somebody to help soften the bridge, whether you put railings of a certain manner or imprints into the wall sections, or whatever that may look like, somebody to help choreograph that aesthetically pleasing. We could add that subconsultant and do those designs and add that as part of the project design.
Any others wish to come?
Thank you. Thank you for hosting this meeting, and I appreciate all the comments. I'm going to pick up on something that hasn't been touched on before I go into what I've heard. The CIP grant indicated that the town of Hilton Head had agreed to offer into the project whatever land on the town of property was necessary. Correct me if I'm wrong, I've asked this many times and no one has said differently. I do not recall, and I do not believe that Hilton Head Island agreed to that.
So the CIB grant, there was... There was a cost proposal as part of the CIB grant as the budget. Included in the budget was a right-of-way donation from the town of Hilton Head of 3.125 million dollars.
Understood.
And that was codified, not only in the application, but also in the IGA. So that commitment is part of the project cost as it is today. What's not included is, and this was something that was addressed in the resolution that council passed and provided to county council, our town council, is that 3.1 million dollars may or may not include all of the enhancements with the bulbout on Jenkins Island, or additional lanes on Stony, or additional enhancements in Stony area. So that was part of the resolution, is that any commitments on town on property, that that would be included as well. So that's where that came from.
But I'm still going to say what I started out with, that I don't believe that the town of Hilton Head's council offered that land.
Well, in that CIB application, that was a joint application, and there was also a letter of support from the town of Hilton Head on that. So it wasn't something that was prepared singly by the county. It was a joint application that was prepared and codified by all that presented. And I believe that was, at the time, it was Ms. Jenkins, or Ms. Jacobs, and the previous city manager that made that presentation to the CIB.
You're correct, Jared.
And so then I'll further that conversation with our town manager and council and mayor at a later date. But I think that our town council was not involved and did not participate in any way in that, at least I didn't. And so that'll be a question for another day. I think what we heard from Mr. Brown, Mr. Ames, from our mayor, is true. What's good for Hilton Head Island is good for the rest of the county and for the state, which means what's good for our residents and our visitors coming onto Hilton Head, what's good for them is good for everyone. And I think that's being lost in this discussion. We're talking about, and now, an improved level of service, as I understand the information this evening. I'm very interested to get the document that you presented, not having seen it. That has been a question of mine, and I look forward to exploring that and understanding that better. The two bridges isn't the only place we disagree. There are twenty-six things here that, while there's a very positive statement about the future, about how these things can be incorporated, I want more than that before I'm on board with accepting that as a statement. The people coming onto Hilton Head deserve better. Our residents deserve better. The experience doesn't start when you get off the bridge. The experience, as we all discussed initially, really begins as you begin to enter onto the bridge from the bluffed inside. And this bridge, as a massive piece of concrete coming across, does nothing to enhance and to continue what all of us have experienced through the generations now of coming onto Hilton Head. Hilton Head is a special place. It's not any town, USA. And we're going to lose it the way the bridge is currently being presented. The design that you showed us today, Craig, I don't know if that's the only design that was considered, but there must be some others that could be thought through, presented and considered. And I'd like to have that opportunity to further that discussion. It's very unfortunate that now we're at the twelfth hour, under pressure, that this is so urgent, that we might lose some money, when it's not all about the money. It's about getting it right. These meetings should have been happening all along, because the county is part of town of Hilton Head. And the responsibility is to the residents who live on Hilton Head, and the tourists and the visitors who become our residents in the future, and the workers who we enjoy having and helping us on the island. So far, I think this has not been done in a way that respects that, that respects our town, and puts us in a position where the future continues to be as bright as our past and our current situation is today. And until those things, until the value added for the residents of Hilton Head is more than the negative impacts to the island through this project, I don't know how any of us could agree to it. And so I have... Going to leave it at that for right now. But there's better... There's a better job that can be done. And another design with maybe some other implications for two bridges needs to be explored, not just something presented to us tonight.
The only thing I will say to that is, no matter what scenario you have two bridges under, you have more environmental impacts than a singular bridge. Two bridges are wider than one bridge under this area. You have more concrete with two bridges than you have with the singular bridge.
Well, perhaps we need to look at the width of the lanes, the amount of concrete that's being used on one section going out or one section coming in. But there must be some design elements that can change to offset what you've just said.
We've looked at different options under that scenario. You know, the lane widths are a nonstarter. That's a federal highway. That's a federal highway criteria for lane widths. The shoulder width, the outside shoulder width, same thing. That's a controlling criteria for federal highways for a US route. Now, when we look at two bridges, the reason that you have additional concrete is you have to have two walls. And so you have a second wall that you add to it, which adds a foot and a half to the bridge. Under those scenarios, when you spread those bridges out, the minimum width that you can get between them is probably between 20 and 50 feet, somewhere there, probably closer to 50 feet because of seismic considerations of it. So you have to factor in that you don't want those bridges interacting with each other under, under a scenario for an earthquake where they hit each other, because they're going to move. Now, if you have a single bridge, it's all going to move together. Two bridges that couldn't move in separate where they hit each other. So when you look at it, we have those three tie points. Those tie points are going to be there. So you're always going to have that curvature of the second lane, because you have to have it together at Pinney, and again at the tie-in points where you come together. So Pinney is your tie point for it. Now, if you spread it, if you push it apart further on the island, on Bluffton side, you end up with more environmental impacts than if you have it tied there and coming off and splitting. So under those scenarios, you've got the lanes coming together, you'd have to split them out, so you've got more fill and wetlands. So when we look at this, fill is a greater impact than a bridge is for wetland impacts. So we've already pulled out as much fill as we can. When we look at this, like we've pulled out, we're pulling all the fill out across Pinney Island that's there. We're pulling fill out in Jenkins Island. The bridge is being extended, I think, 800 feet onto Jenkins Island, further than existing bridges, to help with that, to open up that flow between Hog Island and Jenkins Island, to open all of that back up from a hydraulic standpoint for essential fish habitat, et cetera. But when you look at the bridges over the water, if you go to two bridges versus a single bridge, you're going to add width under every scenario. And then you have where your impacts are. So when you, when you build the, so we have to consider temporary impacts when we construct the bridges. Under temporary impacts, your impacts are longer for two bridges, because you have to build your work trust multiple times. Under a single bridge, you're building one work trust to build it, and it's all offline. So when you're looking at that, you can build that single bridge significantly faster than, than two bridges. So two bridges, you're looking at five years construction window, a single bridge is three years, and you don't impact the traveling public the entire time it's being built. So that, that's a benefit for the residents when you look at the traveling public coming onto the island for the future there as a single bridge. Now, when you look at aesthetically for two bridges, you split them apart, all you're going to see is the other bridge, you're not going to see the waterway. Like, when you look at it, you actually have better views under a single bridge scenario. So when that bridge comes out, it goes into super elevation, so you're turning it, as you turn it, your roadway is tipping. So you're seeing, if you're looking out to try to find the water, you're either seeing the bridge, or you're seeing the sky. And then, you know, if you look at the existing bridge now, the railing is going to go up 10 inches higher than what's on the existing bridge now, to meet current standards. So it's 44, I think those are 34. So under those scenarios, like your views and those type of things, they're changing. So where you can do aesthetic improvements, and we've had these conversations with both town and the county, is there is aesthetic firms that help with the bridge railings, the bridge barrier walls, where they come in and that, that's all they do. They do, they can do piers, they can do anything, and they do form liners, they come up with something that fits in with the character of the island. We started having those conversations with town staff members two years ago about aesthetics on the bridge. So those conversations, you know, were initially, because the firm reached out to us, we took it to the county, and then we took it to the town council, we took it to the town staff. So everybody knew, I think they made a presentation to both county council and town council on the benefits of the aesthetics. So that's like what Jared's talking about, is like you can do things to improve the aesthetics of the bridge. Separating in two bridges isn't going to improve the aesthetics of the bridge from a viewpoint, and it's going to create additional concrete, because when you look at it, you have two sets of, two sets of bridges, two sets of foundations, two sets of beams. So you're doubling everything up, which increases the cost and increases the impacts of the project.
So I'm just going to go to, you know, what isn't as technical, and I'm going to tell you in terms of Hilton Head Island's residents and our visitors, their impressions, and their desire to see more effort put into additional studies, better understanding, better design, better mitigations. As you may know, there are over 8,000 people who have signed a petition, who would like to have that time and that opportunity to, as has been said previously, to do better. We all owe it to them. They're your, they're representatives as well, and I think it makes sense that each of you take that seriously. Of a town of 37,000 people, 8,000 people is a pretty significant number. We do not on Hilton Head need to be urbanized anymore than we are. We don't need to have our belt loosened so that more people can flood on to our island. I think there are a lot of factors that aren't being taken into consideration that will have the detrimental impacts that will still, even with your explanation, outweigh any value added for the town of Hilton Head residents, visitors and our workers. So thank you for the information. The conversation is good. I know it'll get continued, but I do ask that we slow this down, have these meetings so that everyone hears what's important to those of us who live on Hilton Head. Right? Because what's good for Hilton Head is good for the county and is good for the state. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn Stanford, Town of Hilton Head Island. First of all, I want to thank our friends from DOT and the engineering staff for being here. I appreciate Jared's presentation and yours, Joe, and I think it is very healthy that we get these two groups of representatives together on this issue and many other issues that will come before us from time to time. So this is healthy, I hope we're starting a trend here. I'm no traffic engineer, I'm no engineer about anything, but I'm sorry, I do not understand how the emergency access issue is solved by a single bridge. Emergency access to me means a major collision with a bridge, and if that bridge is taken out, we've really got an enormous problem. So I just cannot understand, from a general citizen's point of view, how one bridge is safer, or is as safe as two. I heard what you said, Craig, about it's going to be designed to accept impacts, but we see structures fail all the time. And so I'm not convinced of that in the slightest. We have about 40,000 full-time residents on this island, then we have another 2.5 million people that come in and visit us, more now, I think as much as 3 million, every year. If one of, if the bridge is taken out, we have a major catastrophe for this country, and certainly for this county and this town. And so I am just simply not convinced of that it is just as safe. It does not make any sense to me that it is stated that way. And then I have one little comment, and that is, I don't know if we've gotten a response back on one breakdown lane versus two breakdown lanes. It's one of the 26 points, and maybe I've, maybe I've missed it, but I haven't heard a response on that. That's a, not a major issue, it's not a, not a deal breaker issue, but it is a way for us to try to deal with the impact of this bridge as the entry point into Hilton Head Island. And so I think that we need to look at this emergency aspect, this safety aspect, as having at least equal, if not greater, power and meaning than environmental impacts and some of these other factors that have been mentioned. So I appreciate the opportunity to have a few words here. I've stated how I feel about this. I would like to see us reconsider this and understand what those impacts are. Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Cunningham.
Thank you guys all for coming today, Mr. Chairman, Mayor, for getting this together in the presentation. Actually didn't plan on even saying anything, just more soaking up knowledge, but I've come to notice that so far, the only people that have spoken is people from the town. The thing that I find interesting about it is, it doesn't quite seem like you guys agree either. You have one individual saying he wants to preserve the heritage of Hilton Head and is worried about the impacts of it, and then we have other people that are saying, let's talk about a second bridge, which is going to create more impacts to those specific areas he's even talking about over here. Jared, I do have one question. How long does a project like this usually take to, just for discussions to come up with some type of idea of where we're going to go?
So normally, we say about two years, so a little bit longer. We've been a little bit longer in the process than-
How long have we been at it on this one?
Since 2017.
So we're five years in, working on our fifth year. I use this phrase in county meetings all the time. I don't plan on doing this job forever. I don't think I should do this job forever. I think different people should take our seats at some point, but this project has been kicked, can, the can's been kicked down the road long enough. I don't agree with two bridges. I'll be honest with you guys, I don't. I grew up here in Hilton Head. I've been in the traffic, I've been on the wrecks. I actually worked on Hilton Head while I went, when I drove to Bluffton to teach for three years, and unless there was a wreck, honestly, I lived in the Bluffton Parkway, never took me even longer than 30 minutes to get there, from the Bluffton Parkway up through the bridge to get to school in the morning to work. If there's a wreck, yes, it does take a while to get off. Does our bridge need work and need replaced? Absolutely. Nobody's disagreeing with that. With that being said, when we come into the idea, I've heard multiple people say, if money's no object, if money's no object, but that's not a reality. Money is a reality, money is an object, and it is something we have to take into consideration. If we would have started this project two years ago when we're on the time scale, maybe the money's there to do more than we've talked about. Maybe we do have those more resources, but at a million dollars a week, take out the inflation of the last two years, this project has skyrocketed, and nobody in the state or at the federal level is going to be able to tell us when that's going to stop. But we do know the longer we wait, the worse situation we're in. We have a bridge that's not up to code. I want to talk about disasters that could happen. It's not up to code now. It's not safe for an earthquake. Correct me wrong, I think it's safe for a category three hurricane, currently right now, we're at a category three, and the next one's supposed to be four or five, correct? So right now, category three, you're worried about Hilton Head, you don't even have a way to get to Hilton Head, because we're dragging our feet. We could have already had this bridge if we were on timeline, getting ready to start. So with that being said, I know that's our biggest disagreement. There's a lot of things on the island that you guys know better than I do. And trust me, I have the same argument with people on council and Bluffton. If I hear one more thing about 5B, I'm going to lose my mind, it's a road that still goes to nowhere. I hear it all the time. But we're still funneling everything back to the same place, and that's right on to 46 or right on to 278. None of those issues have been solved. So two bridges, one bridges, you're still going to the same area. I do want to protect Hilton Head, I love this area. There's a reason I took this job and, you know, went down this route, and that's to preserve that, so future generations can enjoy it. I would rather spend the extra money, Lord willing, if there is some left after the inflation stops, on putting that design aspect in on the bridges. Make it the most beautiful bridge you have ever seen in South Carolina, and you want to compete with other counties, then do that. Don't worry about building the biggest one. Build the best one, the best looking one, the people want to come see. The people that they say, no, let's skip Charleston, and let's go down to Beaufort County and Hilton Head, and then go over to Beaufort, and then go down to St. Helena and Paris Island. I just think that's the route we need to go. I know we have a deadline actually coming on Monday for a vote to extend this process. I was actually the one that moved it to buy two more weeks. I made the motion to even have the conversation, I think it's healthy. But if the only thing that's holding us up is a second bridge, I can tell you, I won't be on board with it. We have taken long enough on this project. I won't even be here when this project's done, more than likely. And a lot of us won't be. But at some point, we have to get the ball rolling and have to get this job going, because the moment that's going to happen, we're going to leave this seat, and somebody's going to be in this room having the same dang discussions we're having right now, and doing the same process over again, because somebody else left. Ms. Jacobs left, here we are again. Other people in your town council left, here we are again. Mr. Orlando's new, we had questions for him, here we are again. At some point, we have to say, no situation is going to make everybody happy. It is physically impossible, somebody will always be unhappy. But we have to start somewhere and make the best project we possibly can with the options and availability that we have. Thank you.
Mr. Rodman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Comment. Let's start with the cost. You know, we're all aware that in your high inflationary-
Stu Rodman, county council. Let me start with the cost. We all understand that we're seeing a lot of inflation, and you also ought to know that when, construction costs tend to rise faster than consumer price index. Back of the envelope, I looked at the time period and just made a couple assumptions of what kind of interest we might be seeing, and penciled it out, and people could look at it differently. Those numbers, if they continue, would pencil out to about $100 million. If you pencil it out for another couple months and divide by the number of months, you get back to the $4 million a month or the $1 million a week. I think frankly, that's where, that's where we are. And if you look at where we're going to get the money, the referendum's over, that's a fixed amount of money we got, the SIB money is fixed, so I don't see a lot of places where we're going to get the money. There's places to go get it, but it's, it's an uphill task for us. So the longer we delay, the more costly it's going to be. Of the 26 items, I think, my sense of council is, our council, is that there's no disagreement with any of them, other than the, the one for the bridge. Now, having said that, I think there's a point to be made, which is, we're going through the so-called NEPA process. What that does is describe the box that you talked about, or think about it as a footprint, which really says we're getting an environmental approval, but within that footprint, there's a fair amount of flexibility to do some modifications as we go forward. So I'm convinced that we can do a lot to make the whole thing look better. And one of the points that Tammy made when we had the other meeting was that what we really want is to be able to see the natural seascape that we have. So the other is that, at the end of the, as we start into the design, there's actually a mandated, called value engineering, that has to take place. So there may be things that can be revisited that might help with cost. So other than, and I think we can do both of those, I think we can agree that there's a way to do the arrival experience, I think we can agree that there's, that there'll be an opportunity to still make some value engineering improvements to the thing. And so with the exception of the bridge, I think our council is totally on board with the recommendations that have been suggested. We actually debated the bridge a couple months ago and rejected it, the second bridge. So I'm a little surprised that it's still on the table, but I think the more we look at it, personally, I don't think that it adds anything to the view. I'm not concerned about the safety piece, not risk adverse, and as the longer we wait, the higher the cost is going to be. So seems to me where we are is that we need to move forward. Whether we do a resolution and you do a resolution, or we do a joint resolution, seems to me we're better off to get on with that as quick as we can. To delay something for months and months, I think we really put the entire project at risk, to the point that there's 45 other counties out there begging for money from the SIB, and at some point in time, they would lose interest in us. So I think it's a very high risk to not move forward. There's two issues on the table that I saw in our resolution. One was, is the town going to provide the land that's needed for it? I can't imagine that you wouldn't, but if, I would hope that you would, if we need some kind of a document from you, we would get that as quick as possible, so we're not arguing over it. But if you're not going to provide the land, then you ought to tell us and tell the project before we spend any, any more dollars on design. And the other is the consent. And I think, as you pointed out, the, Chairman pointed out, you know, a bridge across, a federal highway across the intercoastal waterway- you know, a bridge across a federal highway across the intercoastal waterway, feds are going to do what they want to do. Within reason, they're going to listen to us. And then so that really comes down to the municipal consent through STONY. But if we can agree on a path forward on looking at the aesthetics and know that there's a path forward on tweaking things through the value engineering, I don't see any reason why we can't agree now, not to that, but in the very near future, maybe you got to take a vote. But let's get all those things behind us, let's get on, and let's not give other people an opportunity to say they don't know what they're doing down there. So that's where I come out on it. Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Howard.
In my past life, I worked on four environmental impact statements. I think Jared's being very generous by saying 12 to 18 months. All of those took a minimum of two years. That's my concern. If we add, if we go to the two bridges and we don't get the Fonzie, we're going to be doing an environmental impact statement, and we're going to add two years to this project. That's my biggest concern. Thank you.
Mr. Herbichon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This has been an enlightening conversation for me personally. I've heard a lot that I agree with. I've heard a lot that I don't agree with. I agree that what's good for Hilton Head is good for the county, for sure. Over the course of the last couple of years, I haven't heard anybody disagree that STONY is important. And I think that we all agree on the direction of that, for sure. So it seems that we're down to the one bridge versus the two bridge. And based on what I saw here, it doesn't seem to make any sense to go with two bridges. I understand the safety aspect of it, and obviously, safety is number one with anything that we do. But I'm struggling to understand what would have to happen under a two bridge scenario for one bridge to go down? Or even if we just had a single bridge, for one bridge to go down if we're designing it for a Cat 5 hurricane? If we're designing it for a barge? If we're designing it for an earthquake? It seems to me that the scenarios where one bridge would go down, they'd probably both go down, and we'd have bigger problems. That's just where I'm sitting. To Mr. Rodman's point about the cost, that's a concern for me as well. It's been a concern for forever, since I've been on council. It's getting wildly expensive by the day, and I think we need to think long and hard about how we're going to finance it if we're going to continue to kick the can down the road. So those are my comments. And again, I appreciate the time and I appreciate this meeting.
Mr. Glover.
Oh. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me first say that when it comes to Beaufort County, the mainland is there. The rest of us live on an island, and we only have one way on, one way off. So when there's a disaster or an emergency, it exists all over Beaufort, and that's a concern of mine. I don't know how to resolve that for St. Helena by putting another bridge. I doubt that will ever happen. But this, we, I'm hoping that we can sort of rectify some emergency throughout Beaufort County without building a second bridge or a need for another bridge. So trying to address the issue of a second bridge for emergency, I can advocate that for any place on St. Helena because we, a county of islands. Saying that, I'm probably, Mr. Chairman, ready to move forward with the 278 project with the bridges. I support the one bridge because it has less impact on community, particularly the STONY community. But I do would ask this body here of councils to consider STONY community. Historically, bridges, roads, infrastructure have impact African-American communities all over the United States. So that's history. And nothing has really been done to help those communities. So whatever we can do from the state level, federal level, county level, municipality, let's do the right thing for the STONY community by helping them economically. That's the bottom line for me. How do you advance yourself economically? And if we can show it an example of that, I think that's the best thing we can do for the STONY community at this time. And I'm hoping that we can make that commitment to do what we can for that community because it's going to be impact drastically. So yeah, that's my only comment I will make, sir.
Mr. Dawson.
I'll make my comments brief. I'm saddened that we are at an impasse at this hour in the process. And I would just encourage us all from both counties, I mean, the municipal and the county to let's resolve this as quickly as possible, and let's get on with the process before the current bridges collapse.
And Mr. McCollum.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I thought we were much further along in agreeing on how we were going to proceed, and I'm very disappointed that we've seen the bridges fail. I have nothing further to add.
Good. Before I go to our county administrator and our town manager for Hilton Head, let me see if I can allay some of the fear that some of you have said. Glenn, I'm going to start with you. Bridges are failing all over the United States. We have known that for a long period of time. We know, we've learned over the course of time, what works and what doesn't work with bridges. One bridge, two bridge, doesn't matter. It's how it is built to withstand where it is. I firmly believe that, in fact, the bridge is going to be designed in such a way that it will be able to handle any natural, not disaster, but phenomenon, whether it's a hurricane, anything like that. It will be standing there. Our current bridges have failed. So the sooner we get it replaced, the better off we are. Tammy, over the course of the past two years, you have seen, we have had multiple discussions about where we can put the bridges. But they all go across Jenkins Island. That's the pinch point. And because of that, they kept narrowing it down. What was the least impact getting across that onto the island? If, as you saw with the two bridges there, it will have a dramatic impact because you have pinch points, three of them. Bluffton, where you start, Hilton Head, where you end, and Jenkins Island in the middle. A Pinkney Island in the middle. And so no matter how many times we look at it of a two bridge situation, it's going to have a dramatic impact that neither we can afford in the money or the time. And finally, we want the experience of people coming to Hilton Head. In my humble opinion, it doesn't start at the bridge. It starts, if you're coming from the south, 8A. And you start down 278. What is your experience going all the way to Hilton Head Island? If you're coming from the north, it automatically says, don't go down to 8A, get off at 462. Go on to 170 and then go on to 278, which are major roads that are absolutely failed. So it's more than just replacing the bridge. It is the long-term needs that we're going to have for the experience that we're going to need down the road. So now I will turn it over. Mr. Orlando, your comments, sir.
Well, outside of the town council recommendations, you know, as the town manager, oh, first of all, Mark Orlando, Town of Hilton Head Island Town Manager, and I too want to say thank you to Craig's and across from me. I've been watching your face and reading how much you're absorbing this in the room, and I appreciate that. I just want you to know, from us to you, we appreciate you. I heard a couple of things, and outside of the project recommendations, which I think are important, I don't have much to add, but I will add a couple of observations and maybe follow up with some questions with Eric offline and then tomorrow morning. But we talked tonight that the project goals, SC DOT, early project goals, were two things. Replace the bridge, reduce congestion. Right? I think we agree that we said that. But all the things talked about tonight aren't part of those project goals. And so maybe from the front end, and some lessons learned, and maybe just some observations, that this project should be, and I think it needs to be, more than replace the bridge, reduce congestion. Because that's just the basic solution. We talked a little bit about impacts. I think that's more from mine. I think that's my questions with Eric offline and maybe tomorrow. But, you know, I know things are important, and we received a collective response from Beaufort County, from Eric and from DOT. But it said, yes, these things are important to us, but you go ahead and pay for them. Right? If it's a pathway off the head or curb, great, we love that. That's a great idea. Thanks to MKSK, good design solution, you pay for them. Mitigation, linear park, Gulligichi mitigation, preservation, storytelling, other than a pavilion, good idea, you pay for it. But I'm hearing different tonight, so I think I just need to package back up the response letter and make sure that we're understanding the response letter to the degree that, sir, you're speaking, and maybe come back to the drawing board. I can't solve one bridge, two bridge, but I know that the project goals are above and beyond replacing a bridge and reducing congestion. And I'm just very pleased to hear those things discussed tonight. My purpose being here, right, is I'm good partner with Eric. We work hard together. We don't always agree, and a lot of times, we agree. I think that while we have the 26 recommendations on the table, that's what I'm advocating for.
And before I kind of answer that, let me have Eric go, and then I think we can bring it to a conclusion at this point in time. Eric. Oh, I'm sorry. Logan, you had another question?
Yeah, briefly. One thing I left off. Everyone in this room so far, I've heard, has agreed the fact that we need to make sure that Hilton Head is taken care of. And Hilton Head thrives off hospitality and tourism. And that's because of our waterways and the different things that we can offer in our culture, food, dolphin tours, kayak tours. And one of the big things we're leaving out when we talk about two bridges is the impacts that can have on DeFuski. And hear me out before you look at me like I'm crazy. If we're going to go two bridges, that's going to take up more room on Pinkney Island. But Pinkney Island gives us an opportunity in the future to possibly get early access to DeFuski, which gets traffic off Hilton Head that you guys don't want there, first off. I know y'all don't want that grown anymore. And two, it also gives us an opportunity for our school district to maybe do the discovery zone down there that our tourists can come down to there and do. Our schools in Beaufort County can go down there and enjoy it at the same time as being the hub for the shuttle for DeFuski. Because there's only so many days you can go to the beach. There's only so many days you can go ziplining. There's only so many days you want to go to the bowling alley. More opportunities to do things in Beaufort County will bring more tourism and hospitality down here in those months that we're prepared for it. And I think that if we do go two bridges, you're in danger of ruining that opportunity right there on Pinkney Island to get direct access to DeFuski Island. Thank you.
May I ask a question before? Sorry, Eric. The one thing, and I jumped over. We talked about end-to-end, and we talked about Senator Davis coming to council, and you talked about end-to-end analysis. And again, I'm with Glenn. I'm not a traffic engineer, and don't, not trying to be. But a lot of the discussion is about that, and a lot of questions to us and the emails to that are, hey, did you look at this beyond the corridor? And I have to trust you that you did, right? So I think it's probably important that we at least, Craig, maybe slow down and reiterate, is there an end-to-end analysis? And when we discuss end-to-end, what does that mean to you? Because I think end-to-end others means the corridor of Hilton Head Island, not just through Spanish Wells intersection, right? So does the end-to-end analysis you're talking about, A, what's the scope of that? But B, does it include any smart signal technology beyond one or two signals through STONY? In our CIP budget, and I'll just share tonight, my proposal to council in a couple of weeks will have, for lack of a better term, the smart signals, the technology-based signals, similar to Johnny Dodd's in Mount Pleasant, in our capital program. We have funded it, some funds of ours, understanding that there might be a grant out there, so know that's coming. But so did that end-to-end analysis include that? And then, and did it include the removal of the cross-island toll? Because what I'm trying to answer is not just impacts there, but everybody's concerned, and I think we should be, about impacts to the entire island as we hurry people through a corridor. And I'm not saying there's a right or wrong answer. Just I don't think that there's clarity on what you're defining that as, as DOT rep. Think that would be clear?
Yeah, I may ask Jenny here to step in a little bit, but I'll take a shot at and just correct anything that you need to for this. She's our traffic engineering expert, our traffic model expert. We're a long time with LATS developing their model. So we start with the LATS Regional Transportation Model, which is a county-wide. It includes Jasper County, Hampton County, yeah, Hampton, Beaufort, and Colleton County. So it's a four-county-wide model, and it's developed for the entire area. So it's looking at traffic projections based on where traffic's being generated from. So it's looking at receivers, generators and receivers. So it's taking, we're looking at that. So first thing we do is we go through and we look at the model as a whole, and we look at, well, DOT has counters throughout. So we're looking at it, well, is it projected, what's the existing traffic level versus what the projected traffic level is? Are we exceeding? Do we need to adjust the model? Has there been projects that have been completed that weren't included in the model? Or development that showed up that's not included in the model? So then we drilled that down, and that gets to the growth rate for the corridor. And looking at that, so that growth rate and what we're looking at for 278 included the removal of the cross-island parkway because we knew that toll was coming off before this project was going to be completed for construction. So that toll is never, all of our traffic analysis, that toll has been off there. So and then we go down and we go to, we count, count the signals we're looking at. We have basically every hour throughout the year. So we look at that, we find the 100, somewhere between 700s again, finding that peak hour. So we're looking for one hour in that range that meets our criteria, that's not a weekend, not a special event, not a holiday. Somewhere in that range that meets it. And typically, we look at Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursdays. And typically, I think it was a Tuesday in April is roughly when we picked for that. So that's through there. So then that gets adjusted for the traffic signals. We look at what happens at each of the intersections. So we count each of the intersections. So we go out there, do traffic counts in each of the intersections. And we drill that out. That all goes in a model. So the first thing we looked at from a modeling standpoint was four versus six lanes. So highway capacity typically is roughly 1,500 vehicles per lane per hour in the peak hours, which we're looking at for a capacity. Hilton Heads exceeding that are very close to exceeding two lanes now. It's barely, you know, by 2024, 2025, somewhere in that range. And any sort of growth, you're exceeding the four lanes. That's where the six lanes came from. Like, you know, when you look at the future projections of traffic in the peak hour, that's where it gets to. So we go through and you go through synchros. You're looking at the segments, looking at the intersections. As far as synchro, you have syntraffic, which looks at the entire corridor. So we're taking those counts and the growing those counts based on the growth rate to know what the future is. Then we put any other improvements that are part of LATS in there, and that kind of gives us the flow of it. So then when we started modeling it, we modeled basically from the other side of Spanish Wells and the other side of Moss Creek. So on the ends, that is free-flow traffic in. So that's unmitigated traffic through the corridor as if the signal was not at Yumtree. So it's basically saying that that's unmitigated, all that traffic that's coming through there in the peak hour is coming through. It's not, that traffic signal at Yumtree is not holding any of that traffic up because that gives us our worst-case scenario through our corridor, is we have free-flow traffic on each end coming into it. So the cross-island, all that traffic coming from there is flowing into the model, and that model's through the corridor. So it's basically from between, I would say it's between the cross-island merge and Spanish Wells is where it starts at. And then it goes to Moss Creek on the other side. So all that traffic, and it's the edges of- So, all that traffic, and it's the edges of a model, so, you know, we didn't count Yumtree, we didn't count cross-island, but we did do gut checks on those to make sure that where they were going to. We've done gut checks on the distribution of, you know, I know that the town has gone out there and counted it, so we've looked at the counts since the toll's been taken off, and it matches up with what we were projecting for growth on the cross-island. And I don't think it's ever, it hasn't grown where everybody thought it was going to grow to, it only, you know, 10% growth or something, I can't remember exactly what the split is anymore, but it wasn't where it was getting up to 60%, 60/40 where it was closer to 50/50 or more on the business, so. In that, it basically matched up with the model projections were under that. So, under that modeling, going back to that, is you're looking at, each car is looking to find, you know, a pathway through there, so when you're looking at that, so if you improve an intersection, more cars are going to take that intersection, you improve, widen a roadway, the cars are going to go there because it's an easier path for them to get through.
If you add those signals to it, if you add the signals I had mentioned, forgive me, what is the proper term of that signal?
Adaptive.
Adaptive, yeah, adaptive signal. Is that going to make a difference in your model?
I think you would make it, we would be able to carry the model further, it would carry the model further out to those, but we'd have to go count those and grow them the same way and adjust them for that. But those adaptive signals, so we're, you know, we're looking at signal timings, we've optimized the signal timing just based on the traffic that's there, it doesn't include adaptive signals in the model at this time.
But Mark, to also answer your question, so as far as the endpoint, they're not taking it all the way to Seapine Circle. But that is something that could be done in another project and could coordinate that. There has, and as Senator Davis mentioned, there has been some signal improvements already on 278, so in 2018, 2019, all the mainland signals, 14 signals from 170 all the way to Moss Creek were updated with adaptive technologies and interconnected. And then, in 2019, there was some improvements for the first seven signals on mainland, or on Hilton Head proper, not adaptive, but some timing and reconstructing. So, there's been some signal improvements along the corridor over the previous years, so the adaptive technology will be incorporated into the three signals that are part of the project. So, the Squire Pope, or the Windmill Harbor, Squire Pope, and Spanish Wells. But the continuation beyond that would complement what you have conceived and planned in the budget that you just mentioned.
Thank you. Did you say there's adaptive technology off-island right now?
Yes.
Same one that we keep referring to off Johnny Dodd's and similar, or different?
I'm not sure, we have to check on the actual model or vendor.
All right. Okay. Thank you, I really appreciate you too.
Yeah, absolutely.
Mr. Greenway.
I don't have much to add, other than the fact that, you know, I don't want us to leave here tonight thinking that things are bleak and that we're not making progress. I would tell the Town of Hilton Head Island representatives that you all have an extraordinarily talented team. I have a high esteem and respect for your city manager, I have a high esteem and respect for Sean, I've worked with him on this project and the St. James Church project, so you all are blessed to have the talent that you have there. To the county council representatives, I would say that we have talent in Jared Frelix and the team that has been assembled to deal with this corridor project, and Craig, and Phil, and Eric, and I don't know the other of folks' names, so I apologize to you, but I know if you're working with those guys, you're as equally talented as they are. So, as we leave here tonight, I just want you all to know that we're still going to continue to make progress and improve the corridor, even after we get through the NEPA process. This is just the beginning of that, we're at 30% design right now, or we're going to have 30% design. So, it's, somebody said earlier, it's like baking a cake, we're just mixing the batter right now. We can't tell you what the cake's going to ultimately look like at this point, but we don't really need to do so. In my 28-year career in local government, I've often said that most of the problems that we deal with aren't really problems at all in reality. It's a problem because someone perceives that it's going to be a problem or that it is a problem. So, that's what we're dealing with right now, is perception issues, so, to a large degree. So, I would just ask everyone to keep that in mind, know that Mr. Orlando and I are working together, even though the mayor has to send letters on his behalf, because I didn't respond to an impact fee email in a timely manner, but anyway. So, I do appreciate the working relationship that I have with Mark and our ability to joke with each other and things like that, so that's all my comments.
So, final comments, and one of the things that was discussed by Senator Davis was an independent study which has been reviewed as to how long it would take. He thought it was going to take 60 days and maybe cost $250,000. After he met with SC DOT and Secretary Hall and discussed the parameters of what he was looking for, they then turned over to the experts to find out that we could do it, we don't have to have an independent contractor, we've already started all of the things that were there. If we brought in an independent contractor, it's almost like starting over. It wouldn't be $250,000, it's more along the line of a million or a million and a half, and it would take nine months. So, we can't do that. And as far as you said, we're looking at every avenue we can to get this paid for by somebody other than the taxpayers of Beaufort County. That is our concern, that's our goal. We are looking at every grant opportunity. We know that the, what is now affectionately called the bill, the bipartisan infrastructure legislation, there is money to be had for a variety of projects, one of which is roads and bridges. So, we're going to tap into that, knowing full well that, as we said, and I don't say that lightly, I said in the last meeting, I was elected by a district to represent Beaufort County, but my title is Beaufort County Councilman. So, I represent all 187,000 people. So, your problems are my problems, and we need to sit down and solve them together. I think it's in our best interest for you to agree that we should move on so that we can get the design that we need to satisfy all the things that you desire of that experience getting to Hilton Head Island. So, if there is no further comments, I want to thank you. This is not the end. Again, this is just another step. I would hope that you will be able to go back with your council, discuss this, and make a decision as soon as you possibly can for the best interest of everybody. So, everyone, thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
No further action. This meeting is adjourned.